Mics on, mics on.
Mics on, mics on. Thank you.
Not that hard.
Okay, we will reconvene this meeting.
Mics on, mics on.
We'll start with attendance. Except for Corey or. Okay, we have roll call, everybody's here and we have public comment announcement. And pursuant to board policy number 2350, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person or 30 minutes per topic. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. All speakers would like to have to comment regarding a matter not on the meeting agenda must submit a public comment card to the board president or recording secretary prior to the point in the meeting for open forum on non-agenda items. Public comment cards are available at the information table at the rear of the boardroom from the recording secretary or online. We ask all speakers come to the podium to address the board. Thank you. Okay, we have one, one card, Jason Bowen. Oh, oh, hold up. We're going to do the pledge first.
Yes.
Ms. Gaines, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of them.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And okay, let's go to the Jason Bowen.
Agenda.
Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I gotta get, I'm anxious. In case you haven't noticed, there's an inner inside joke. Okay, we have approval of the meeting agenda. So their second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have open forum on agenda items. You get to come now, you got a lot of exercise, right? Good.
Well, I got a little exercise, so I need it, but. Uh, so first of all, good to see all of you, happy holidays. Uh, so I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the faculty union. And what I like to do is just clarify. Well, for me, my position regarding the recent perv ruling, you know, regarding the calendar change. Uh, so the, my position is, is, you know, so one question is, has been asked, does, does faculty, specifically the union, do we believe that we're serving students and pushing forward for, you know, a restoration of the prior calendar? Which was, uh, there was a ruling by administrative law judge to that effect. And, you know, so the position is, and I want to emphasize that we're open to dialogue. So there's a lot of data out there uh, that we can review their constituent groups that, you know, will weigh in that we want to, we want to look at, you know, what they have to say with regards to, you know, you know, how to deal with the, with the calendar going forward. But the position currently is that the the, the current calendar is inferior to the prior calendar in terms of serving students. Now, I don't have a lot of data, but from all of the data I've looked at over the last several years, the prior calendar with intercession served the students better. So for example, the switch to the current summer schedule for Kim 110, for the first six, first of all, high school students are cut out of the first six weeks and the 12 weeks because the start dates for those sessions overlaps with their high school schedule. So they'd have to take the sixth week, which high school students don't necessarily aren't inclined to do because they want a break before the start of the next uh, academic year. For the students that do enroll in these courses, so for example, the first six week uh, session for Kim 110, that course started out this past summer with 48 students and at the end there were 15 students. So the retention rate was 31.3%. Simply because Kim 110 being taught in six weeks is, is extremely tough. Then you could say, well, what about 12 weeks where there's no faculty to teach 12 weeks? Because you teach spring, 12 week summer, and then jump right into fall and faculty want a break. And then of course, the question is, well, don't faculty want to serve students? Yeah, but students themselves don't want to do that. So faculty feel the same way that the students feel, we need some kind of break uh, in between sessions. Fall, this, you know, we have tip, this is typical, 24 students in Kim 110. And then by the end of the semester enough drop where there's 16, so that's 67% retention rate. In an eight week summer course, typical, you'd have 73% retention rate. So if we're just looking at the number of students who, who stay in these six week courses in the science courses, they're not, they're not staying in the courses relative to say the fall in the summer. So, you know, you know, another benefit of say an intercession would be, and this is how the counselors feel, they can, students can get courses completed in summer, in winter intercession, and then get out and transfer by the end of spring, but without the, and then of course, and then another benefit of that I learned earlier is that it can boost their GPA for that current academic year. So it's just win-win. Now, in the past, it was successful. So, you know, you know, a move to, to keep the current calendar, I think there's a debate that needs to be made, but the position is, is that an intercession serves students and we believe that and we looked at the date and had this discussion years ago. This is our position. We believe that the constituent group should be consulted. You have administration, students, faculty and staff. Staff are split because it doesn't really affect them because they're here anyway. You have administration and there are serious issues regarding financial aid. So there's financial aid for summer, not winter intercession. So that's important. Uh, faculty want the two months for intercession. And then some have said, well, that's just so they can go on vacation. This argument is nonsensical to me because there's a fixed number of duty days in the year anyway. Faculty are going to get two months.
Dr. Bowen, I'm sorry, your time is up. I'm going to have you wrap it up.
Okay. Okay, can I, can I get another minute?
I'm the only speaker. Sorry, over.
Okay, can I have one more minute over the minute?
Add up to the board.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll wrap this up. The faculty, 83% in a poll wanted to keep intercession. With the, uh, the survey that, you know, asked 2048 students what they wanted to do, only 10% felt that they were dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the calendar with the intercession. So the constituent groups did weigh in, we had this discussion, we had the open forums. So, but the point is, is we are cognizant of the need for constituent groups to weigh in and faculty do care about how they feel. And lastly, there's just the process that needs to be followed. So we're, we're, we're open to a dialogue. We like to follow the process, but we believe that an intercession does serve students and that the constituent groups did weigh in at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we have a presentation on student housing update.
So, um, I would like to do a little bit of an introduction. We're very excited about today's presentation. Um, Antelope Valley College has been working for a couple of years. Um, several people, Dr. Zimmerman, um, there's been several people, um, in the meetings. I know VP Rivera, uh, and VP Brar, who's not here today. There's been a lot of people in the conversations about how do we supply housing for our students who are housing insecure. Um, there's been some stopgap measures and we're grateful to the city of Lancaster who's partnered with our student services area to provide some housing. But recently, the state chancellor's office has made available, um, building grants, planning grants and building grants for student housing. Antelope Valley College made application for both grants uh, at the same time last year and we were being ambitious and, and I say we collectively because I wasn't here, but congratulations to the folks who did the great work. Um, we were not granted both, we were granted the planning grants. And so we have spent the last year furthering our plans in order to make application this year for the building grant. And so we've really positioned ourselves well with the acquisition of the 30 acres behind the college. And today, um, I'm really pleased to bring with you two of our colleagues who've been working with us. We have frequent meetings about, um, how we're bringing all of this together. And so with us today, giving us a presentation are Deborah Shepley from Gensler and Anne Volz from the Volz Company.
Thank you, Dr. Zellet, for the introduction. I assume everyone can hear me. Okay, great. So, um, yes, um, I have been actually very fortunate to work with your college. Um, I was here a year ago with Dr. Zimmerman presenting about student housing. And so it's really wonderful to be back and see like, as Dr. Zellet mentioned, there's been such great progress. Um, you have received a planning grant that is allowing us to, to really fund a well thought out construction grant to provide this low cost housing for your students. Of course, the feasibility study that we did, um, about a year and a half ago, that was even performed before we even knew about a grant, so showing how proactive you have been for your students in need for this, um, simple, basic need of shelter so that they can have student success. Fortunately as well is because you did pursue both last year is we, I'm going to go through the evaluation um, criteria that has come out since that time. We get 10 more points. So you're ahead of a lot of your competitors, to say the least. Um, so I, I do applaud and, and Dr. Zimmerman, Dr. Brar, so many folks too, last year worked with us and, and it was, it was a lot of effort and then, of course, the support of all of you. So where we are today is the grant keeps evolving. And I promise you that we are trying very hard to always stay on top of the latest information. It's very much a teamwork. And when I say that too, it's colleges sending us emails, we're having weekly calls. And then as of last November 30th, we received what, uh, the chancellor's office is saying is the final evaluation rubric. So we're following it very closely. I don't know if it's up on the screen, but you can put it on the screen. Oh, or I could put it on the screen. That would be nice. Thank you. So it's a two-page rubric for 100 points total. And what it really focuses in on, and we didn't have this criteria last year, this just, um, it's new. But that lowest cost per bed per student housed. This is a program to create as many new beds amongst our state to provide shelter for those most in need. So they are looking to have it to be a very traditional and, and Deb from Shepley will certainly share those concepts that have come from this criteria, but also relating back to all the feasibility work. This needs to be student housing that works for your students. While we want to achieve the grant, it's certainly that blend. So, uh, that is, and it's also too, has ruled out, and we didn't know this last year, and, um, students with families would not qualify for the grant. So, um, the state has acknowledged that it's challenging to understand how the state right now can pay for housing for a child. It also would require, of course, a bigger footprint. So therefore, the lowest cost per student housed metric would be very challenging to be competitive. So I just want you to, when you see the plans, don't, we did not purposely rule out the students with families. It is, this program is just not supportive of that student. Uh, geographic regions, so there are different regions this year that, um, you'll be competing against. Um, as I mentioned too, by going in, in the January round, there's January and July. That's what's left. Is, um, as I mentioned, we get the 10 more points here at Antelope Valley because of all the work that we did last year, we um, did last year. And they also too are looking, there's a, a cap on the rents. It is 30% of 50% of the area median income. We're not solving to go to that cap. We're solving for as far below, while also being conservative, we certainly want to make sure it's financially break even. Um, Dr. Brar makes very sure of that. Um, so, but as far below as we can keep underneath that cap, the more competitive we will be in the grant. So we're still working with the design and working with the cost estimates. We're working, um, all of us with the total cost of ownership. We know it's going to take more staff. Um, here, it's going to probably take, uh, maybe additional counseling. Dr. Zimmerman's been very informative, maybe extended student services hours. Have a lovely student union, it's maybe need to be open a little bit longer once it's open. So we're calculating all those costs. And then, of course, we're working on putting in the application, which will go in on January 25th. We don't get to have it a second later. So that is the date we're working towards. I go, um, turn it over to Deb to share the concepts that, um, she and her team have developed to date.
Well, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here to share with you the design concept, uh, which is a key part of this grant application. So there's all the, the homework, the legwork, the feasibility. And then we turned it into a concept because part of the grant now is asking for construction. Asking for the dollars to, uh, actually two parts, to complete the design and to do the full construction. So what we have is a preliminary concept design to the level that's required for the grant. And it all begins with the program. So based on the feasibility study and all of the analysis that was done, there's a recognized need and recommendation to construct 300 beds. What our team did, once we had the scoring rubric, is then to test a series of scenarios and models and look at different unit mix types. What we landed on was to develop, as Anne mentioned, traditional uh, and beautiful and, and really nice, um, student housing units focused on singles and doubles. And so currently there, in the plan, we have 90 singles, which would be 90 beds, and then 105 doubles, which will be the 210, and that together will equal the 300. So in our testing, we were looking at forecasting of get, of looking out at the cost per square foot. That provides a very efficient footprint and a really, um, nice target for the cost per square foot because you will be competing with colleges all over the state. So we want to make sure we had, um, a good starting point for the program. We also have, um, well, within those 300 beds, there are some that are designated for resident advisors. So that's within there to provide supervision as well as a space for a housing director's apartment. So we have a, a two bedroom housing director place. And that, they perhaps might have a family or children. Um, so there, there's a little bit more space for that. So what's wonderful is your site. Oh my gosh, it's fantastic with your new property and the location. And it provides the perfect balance between access and distance. So access is, it ties directly into your campus core along the campus promenade. And distance is fabulous. There's a distance, there's a bit of a walk for students that live there that they can walk and go to school and go to class or it's a library and then walk and go back home. That distance, that separation is important. That will really help in developing that what will be a wonderful living and learning community for your students in need. We've identified a location here for what would be this housing grant application, which we're calling phase one. There could be future phases. And we're looking at it directly off the access of the promenade. And you can see, and you know, it's quite a large site. And if you look at that little footprint, it's kind of small. There's a lot of space still to the north and the south for future development opportunities. Uh, but looking at the access, what connects most clearly with the campus while leaving opportunities for future development. What we have mapped out in this diagram is what could be phase two. So entering at the middle of the site, there could be the phase one. This is the grant we're submitting in January and there could be potential for more housing. Still leaving a lot of other opportunities for other potential development opportunities. So I'm going to zoom into the area and what you see is that red arrow. That's the arrow that connects from the campus promenade. And with a little bit of a diagonal shift will take you into the entry plaza. That entry plaza is a wonderful place in itself for, um, a really welcoming environment. It could be a place for activities as well. But through the entry plaza, there will be a gate into what will be one of two secured courtyards. So the buildings are arranged around two courtyards. So we're designing both the interior space and the exterior space, again, really to create a nice community. And that outdoor space can be multifunctional. It could support areas for students to study, to socialize, to gather, to eat, to dine. We even have an area where there could be an outdoor kitchen, a grill. Um, so really, really supporting that connecting that community for all the students that do live there. So, um, this is a little light on the screen right now, but we'll zoom in to show a little bit more detail. This is how the complex is arranged and there's three neighborhoods. And the idea is each of those neighborhoods is houses a group of students on each of the floors. So that could be part of an identity. It could be a cohort. And within a neighborhood, there's a mix of singles and doubles. There's shared restrooms, there's a community kitchen and there's, and there's multiple study areas. So that whole area is a community within the larger community of the housing complex. And so here you see, we took the diagrams off of the, of the neighborhoods, you can see the entire first floor. And if I, if you point your attention to the center in the middle, you now see the quad that surrounds a building in the middle. And in that first floor area that you'll see immediately as you enter from the gate is an office. That's for supervision, for eyes on, uh, people entering and exiting, but also all around the quad area. There'll be a check-in lobby, there'll also be a food pantry in that area. And there'll be a laundry space. So we've put the laundry space in a really nice area, visible with glass in and out as it, as another area for students to socialize. So they could be doing laundry, sitting outside studying or socializing, but it's in a central location for all to access. And then working your way around the neighborhoods, beginning at the bottom, you can see around the perimeter, the different colors indicate singles and doubles. The yellow areas which are distributed throughout are the study areas. The pinkish areas are the kitchens, those are shared, nice community kitchens. The students can come in and cook and eat, cook together, eat together. There's, there's generously sized so they can support, uh, multiple small groups working together and cooking. And then moving up to the second floor, it's a similar diagram. But you can see there's a portion that, um, extends above the courtyard. So it does create some cupboard areas on the first floor as well for shade. And again, you see the patterns of the singles and the doubles. And, uh, the, the shared spaces, the study, the community kitchen. And also I'm going to come back to the first floor for a moment. There is a, a blue space up at the front. That's the housing director apartment. It's strategically located at the front to have access to parking direct in. It's near the front, so there could be eyes on. However, at the same time, it's screened because we know the person living there, um, and, or, and/or family will want some privacy. Um, but it is right there at the front. Here's what you see is a bird's eye concept design drawing. This is a view from the college side. And it starts to illustrate the conceptual massing of what the building or the complex will look like. So you can see it's a two-story. We actually talked in the beginning about two-story versus three-story, two-story seemed like the right scale uh, to not get too tall, to work with the neighbors. And then you can see the views into the wonderful courtyards as well as the site landscape surrounding. So that's a high-level overview of the design concept at this point. And we're now using it to develop the cost estimate. The cost event is, estimate is underway. It's a key piece, of course, to tie into that rubric and is a key part of the application, along with many other parts that are in the process. And I'll hand it back to Anne to talk about those other parts.
Thank you so much. Hopefully you like the design as much as we do. It, it really allows us, you saw, for really wonderful student engagement, which is so important. It's, it's more than just housing students. So the next steps is January 25th. That date is ingrained in our minds. Uh, we're going to shoot for a little earlier, of course. Um, but that will be, the application will be emailed into the state chancellor's office. Chancellor's office, from what we know then, makes their recommendations that go to the department of finance. And we should be made aware by the end of June if we are successful and let's, um, we are doing all we can to make sure that we are going to be very happy in June. And so, um, for your students and this wonderful opportunity, but those are the next steps. So of course, we're both here for any questions.
Yeah. Um, so thank you for letting us know that it comes through the state chancellor's office. You'll be submitting this grant on the 25th. When will you know about the awards?
That is expected to be, um, it would be finalized in the bill that would be signed, um, on June 30th of this, over the next year.
Okay. 30th, also, I, I just have a few more, I'm sorry, I'm a grant writer, so I'm really concerned about this. It is a wonderful opportunity for the college. It really is. And I wish you, um, the best with it. Of the total amount that you can be awarded, I'm sorry, I know it's probably in the.
There's, no, there's not a total. It is, we are submitting, so we've been told there's, um, there's anywhere from 250 to 750 million dollars. I know that's a big swing, but we're hearing both numbers available for this round.
Okay, so it's just based on the budget that you submit for what you.
That's, it is, but you want to, um, what we've learned from what we learned last year is we do need, that's another reason for the 300 beds that the state, from everything we've heard, wants to spread the money around, for lack of a better way to put it. So we don't want to go in for a $200 million
Right.
student housing community. So we are cognizant of that.
And just one other question, is there a match requirement on ABCs?
Uh, there is not a match requirement, however, you would get, um, I believe it's five more points if there was a match that was very brand new.
Okay.
That came out from the chancellor's office, brand new, as in pretty much the last month.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a, I have a couple, uh, first of all, comment, uh, love the design of this housing. Love that it, I, I see, um, uh, coordination with what we are currently building on campus with the, with the, uh, little bit of the poppy color infused in the outside. I'm hoping that stays like that. And also all the glass, I think it's really, really, uh, a beautiful, uh, design. Um, I'm assuming since we received a planning grant, Art, is this design already in DSA for approval?
No, it's not. Right now, it's a concept design and it's to the level we need for the grant. So we did the programming, we did, it's very, it's preliminary design. So when, hopefully you hear great news on June 30th, the next step is to do the full design and documentation to get it into DSA. And part of the grant writing, we're actually charting out what that schedule would be, when it would get into DSA, when it's expected out of DSA, when you would break ground. Because there is some incentive for a fast schedule that would help to perhaps put this grant ahead of others. So we're charting out the timeline now, but it, uh, we're really in the preliminary design concept stage.
Thank you.
Uh, I have a few questions. Uh, first of all, I'm sorry, uh, I don't know who you are, or you.
Oh, you don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I am Anne Volz and I am with Volz Company. And we are a higher education, real estate advisor and program manager.
And, uh, pardon?
And I'm Deborah, Deborah Shepley. I'm an architect from Gensler.
Okay.
And have been working on campus for several years.
Okay, thank you. Um, did you by any chance check out the housing in like the Imperial, uh, college they have?
Oh, Imperial Valley College, the tiny house.
And Santa Clara, I think, is it Santa Clara, they have student housing too? Yeah, yeah, there, you know, there's a couple colleges that have student housing. Have you checked those to see?
What's he have?
We are familiar with the colleges that do have student housing currently and the ones that are in planning and early design phases as well. In fact, we're assisting some other colleges as well with some grants.
Okay, now, the money, uh, that you hope to get, uh, is this a one-time element allotment by the state to the community colleges? Is this going to be continuous, this, uh, this funding?
So the way it is written in the bill, which was, uh, SB 169 that came out last year, it's a one-time, but it's allocated over three years.
Uh-huh.
There is no indication that there will be any money beyond this.
Right. Yeah, we, we, uh, the projection is the $25 billion shortfall in state government.
Well, hearing that, um, and we've heard similar, I didn't know it was quite that much. Um, I don't think we can expect to see another program in, anytime soon.
If you submit this design. If you submit this design, if, you know, this is what we're going to do, are we stuck with it?
Parts of it, yes. With the number of beds, with the unit mix and the dollars, the budget. Um, and the site.
Oh.
The exact configuration, if you wanted later to move a study room from one side to the other side, or the kitchen needed to be somewhere different. There's some flexibility within the design and the layout. But conceptual wise, we're getting it to a point that we can develop a realistic cost estimate. And then that's the budget that will be provided. The state will provide no more.
Yeah. Well, did you consult with people in the area around here on this design? Did we have community meetings or anything on this?
If I could, sir, we have, uh, we have a committee on campus. And we've been working on this design with our consultants in order to make sure that what we're trying to design best meets the criteria to increase our likelihood of receiving the grant, but also works with current plans within the college. And so have we reached out to community constituents? No, we have not. Um, because it's not quite to that phase yet. And our community constituents wouldn't have the in-depth institutional knowledge to know best how to integrate this plan with what we've, what we're doing with the rest of Measure V and those kinds of things.
Well, uh, in this, you, you knew this community.
Yes, thank you for inviting.
We had the, uh, healthcare district submit plans for a new hospital. And we get money and so forth for bond measures. And, um, that, that didn't go over well with the community. You have a fixed design here that can't be altered. We're stuck with it. If we get the money, we're stuck with it. If the community throws a monkey wrench in and says, we are going to protest this housing because it's going to be overgrowth over here, uh, then we're stuck. You can't change.
If I could interject, this is not a bond. This is a grant. So we, the community owes nothing on this. If we are awarded this grant, then the reason that we're locked in to the build is because the amount of the grant, which is free money from the state, the amount of the grant is commensurate with the cost of the build. Now, some of the intricacies of that, we're working out on campus. It was mentioned earlier, like, how do we become a bit of a 24-hour campus? Because the ongoing costs are then the privilege of the college so that we can serve our students. There will be no fiscal impact to our community. In fact, it will, it will be a benefit to the community because we've gotten a beautiful new housing, facility that costs them nothing. And so, um, and, and the property that it's going on is the property that the college has purchased. So, um, there's, there's no negative impact to the community.
Well, uh, Madam President, uh, if I understand, the college is not going to manage the housing. We're going to farm it out to someone. Is that correct?
Those, those are decisions that are in the making. We will do whatever benefits the college and is fiscally responsible.
I don't know if any of those other institutions I mentioned, do they farm out management or do they, the college?
Sure. And, and Dr. Zalit, uh, obviously too, this, these are decisions that you make really post-award. But you're, these are great questions. So the colleges that historically had, there were about 10 or 12 that have had historically, they're, they're very rural. Then, and they have all managed them themselves. Um, in 2020, Orange Coast College opened up, um, their student housing with a private management company. There's a big responsibility matrix with anything, even if you farm it out, you are still, it's your housing. So there would be a matrix that's quite detailed and it'll be, it's too preliminary right now. But what you're going to share, what you're going to control. Um, so you really work in partnership with that management company and they represent as Antelope Valley.
Well, are, are you aware that the Cal State system is protesting, uh, student housing on community colleges now?
Well, I'm aware of the protest. I wasn't aware that it was, um, based on community colleges though. So you may, you certainly would know more than me.
You know, we're, we're kind of overlapping with the Cal State system. Yeah.
Oh, I see where that connection comes. Um, also too, we, we did meet with the city of Lancaster several times too during our study. So I just, I thought you should be aware and they're very, they were very supportive.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much. Excellent report. Good design. Okay. If we move on to administering, administering the oath of office, so.
Yes, we're very fortunate to have three of our existing board members re-elected. So yes, please, uh, come down to the front of the dais. And we will administer the oath of office. So, please repeat after me. Uh, when I say state your name, fill in your name. I state your name, yes, and please raise, raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Or Michael Lansky.
Thank you.
Okay, now we've come to the point that I've been waiting for. The election of officers for the period of December 9th, 2022 through December 8th, 2023. And can we start with, uh, presidents and we have a nominee?
I would like to nominate, well, actually I would like to nominate Steve Buffalo, just annoying, but I will, I will nominate Barbara Gaines to be president.
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed? Good. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Okay, second, uh, we have the, uh, vice president's position. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Michelle Harvey as vice president.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And then we have the position of clerk. Do we have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Michael Adams.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we may now change positions.
Pardon us for a moment while we rearrange the furniture and get everyone in their new chairs. Congratulations. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. You and so. You got it.
Okay. Careful of the boards, yes.
Mass at your way.
All right. Are we all resituated? All right, we'll continue with, um, item 13.2, selection of one board member to represent the district in the election of board members to the Los Angeles County Committee on School District Organization and selection of one board member to represent the district in the LAKSTA, Los Angeles County School Trustees Association. This one member, or we could do it two members, or it could be one member to serve in both capacities. Do I hear a nomination for someone or a selection?
I'd like to nominate Michael Reeves.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Michael, you, are, are you okay with representing us at LAKSTA? And, uh, thank you. Uh, we'd like to select one board member to represent the district in the Antelope Valley School Boards Association for 2023.
Nominate Barbara Gaines.
I second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It's something I, I do, but you're all welcome to attend those meetings and please do. Um, 13.4, selection of one board member to represent the district on the Antelope Valley College Foundation Board of Directors for 2023. Um, and I would like to nominate Michael Adams for that. I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of 13.5, approval of superintendent's organizational report. Do I have a motion? So move. Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, 13.6, approval of the 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, 13.6. Uh, report out of closed session, um, items 4.1 through 4.4. We have no report out of closed session. Item 4.5, Public Employment Interim Assistant Superintendent Vice President of Academic Affairs and Interim Assistant Superintendent Vice President of Human Resources. On a motion, uh, made by Mr. Adams and seconded by Mrs. Gaines with a 5-0 vote, the board approved the interim vice president of academic affairs employment contract for Dr. Howard Davis for the term of July 5th, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. And, uh, for interim vice president of human resources employment contract for Victoria Simmons for the term of December 1st, 2022 to April 28th, 2023. Very great. Consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve? Move to approve? Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President, I would like to pull, uh, 15.14 and 15.15.
That, um, Mr. Reeves, was that 15.15?
And 15.14.
But Mr. Reeves, we, we do not pull them. You, it's open once it's been motioned and seconded for discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
It is open for discussion. Any discussion at this time?
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Buffalo and Madam President. I'm, I'm wondering why, um, these two items are coming up. Uh, vacancies on the board, we don't have any vacancies on the board, and also the conflict of interest.
Sir, I can address that. This is just the business of the college and review, continuous review of board policies. So periodically you'll see policies come through that have been through the participatory process on campus. And the final step of the review is the acceptance and approval of the revision and update of the board. This is an accreditation standard that we continually review and revise our board policies.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, so, um, uh, I have a, uh, motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Action item 16.1, approval of the rev- resolution number 22-23-7, declaring the futility of public bidding for contract tracing services with Schlitt Associates Incorporated, doing business as public safety and economic growth. Uh, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Uh, yes, Madam President. Um, this involves $450,000. What do we mean by the futility of public bidding? Can somebody explain that?
We're, instead of rebidding for a new company, we're extending the agreement. And this is our contact tracing firm, what, that helps us with contact tracing with regard to COVID-19. And so it's a, as in the background summary, it tells you it's a OSHA requirement that we do, that we contact trace and we don't have the personnel in-house to do that on our own. And so we contracted this firm.
But we're not, uh, allowing bids from other firms?
We already employ this firm and we're extending the contract. This is an extension of the contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 16.2, approval of the 2022 Institutional Self-Evaluation Report in support of reaffirm, reaffirmation of accreditation. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion?
Uh, Madam President, I, I, uh, looked over this, uh, reaffirmation of accreditation and it mentions, um, the board. I, I'm wondering who wrote this out, uh, this reaffirmation of accreditation?
Uh, for at least two years, there has been our accreditation. It, it's our institutional effective, uh, effectiveness group. I just lost the, the name of the committee. Thank you, Strategic Planning Committee, um, uh, under the direction of Dr. Mita Goel and Dr. Miranda K. I, I lost her last name. Miranda K. Adabio. Yes, she's the faculty coach here. So as, uh, when accreditation, the institutional, uh, self-evaluation reports are written, they're done with across collaboration of constituency groups across campus. So there's been classified professionals, faculty, students, administrators, all involved in the construction of this. By accreditation standards, um, board members are, um, I, I'm anticipating maybe a further, a next question. If you're wondering why board members were not involved in the writing of this, it, that is not actually how accreditation works. It's a self-study of the institution, um, the, and then this, usually what happens is it gets written based on documents and evidence from board meetings and calendars and those kinds of things. And so that's, that's where the ICER comes from.
Well, um, when they talk about board members, um, they're dictating, saying that the, the board members, uh, allow people to speak, but they don't intervene unless it, interferes with the process. Is that fair for someone to tell accreditation people how the board should act?
A board policy tells how the board should act and everything that's in here, we refer back to our policies and practices that are, are jointly approved through our processes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 16.3, approval of academic policies and procedures. Uh, AP&amp;P Committees' Recommendations for Course Listing. Do I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 16.4, Approval of Professional Services Agreement Between PPL Incorporated and Antelope Valley College for the Recruitment of the Vice President of Academic Affairs Position. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 16.5, Approval of Amendment of Agreement Between Collegiate Enterprises Solutions, LLC DBA Registry for College and University Presidents through February 28th, 2023. LLC, DBA Registry for College and University Presidents through February twenty eighth, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point six, approval of the professional services agreement with Walter Johnson and Associates Incorporated to continue investigation services for the district from July one, 2022, through June thirtieth, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point seven, approval of amendment number one for professional service agreement with MGI Advocacy Incorporated for Legislative Advising Services from January first, 2022, through December thirty first, 2026. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, this contract is for four years. Why is it four years? And we, I brought this up before. Do we need advocacy in Sacramento when we have Assemblyman, Senators, and so forth?
Thank you. That's a good question, sir. So our colleagues at MGI Advocacy, they actually are lobbyists whose specialty is education. And so the difference between going through our local congressman or our local politicians is their expertise may or may not be in community college and the interests of community colleges. And MGI has advocated for us and has been, in addition to our colleagues who presented on the student housing, MGI has been pivotal in keeping us informed about things like that, also helping us navigate upcoming legislation that could be problematic for the institution. And so we get weekly reports. And recently, I have been inviting our advocate, our lobbyist, to join the executive meetings. We have executive meetings every Monday, the team is able to interact with him and give him direct input about matters affecting us here at Antelope Valley College, which he then takes directly to Sacramento.
Why are we extending it to a four-year contract? Isn't it a one-year contract? We knew this every year, why are we going to four-year contract?
It's an ongoing service that we anticipate meeting, and so we chose to do a four-year contract.
Thank you.
I do have, you answered my question, President Zalat. But what I did want to know was whether or not they were involved in the student housing, because it is a competitive grant, and this is the benefit to having the service like MGI. Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Sixteen point eight, approval of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, continued funding application for California State Preschool Program. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point nine, approval to negotiate contract with Facilities Planning and Consulting Services Incorporated to assist with partial creation of student housing grant. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, are these the people that spoke before us?
Yes, correct, and the compensation for this contract comes out of the first grant, the development grant that we were awarded last year.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point ten, approval of, for amendment number one for Santa Clarita Elevators for annual maintenance for elevators and wheelchair lifts. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. We're using COVID funds for a whole bunch of things. Who gives us the authority to use COVID funds for all these different projects?
If you, if you look, sir, at the budget source, it's unrestricted building maintenance repair funds. So this is not being funded through higher education emergency relief funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point eleven, approval of amendment number one of service agreement with Cumulus Technology Service with HERF funds, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point twelve, approval of agreement with Oxford Suites Lancaster, do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, why do we need to have a contract with a hotel chain in Lancaster?
So this is a multifaceted contract, sometimes it's a lodging, as you can see in the background, for opposing athletic teams and guests of the district. But also, at the same time, we, at this point in time, we're using this contract as a way to help service some of our students who are housing insecure.
Yeah, I thought we had a contract with the Marriott people over there on JA. Do we have a contract with them too?
I'll have to check on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point thirteen, approval of consultant services agreement with Erwin Oheda, Doing Business as Limitless Janitorial Services to Clean and Prepare ABC Kitchen for Reopening. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, I want to congratulate the administration for preparing, I assume, for the cafeteria to reopen. Thank you very much.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point fourteen, approval of amendment number one with Ricardo Barrera, Doing Business as Izzy's Taco House or Food Truck Services, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen fifteen, approval of amendment number two with Marco A. Blanco, DBA Acetisery Chicken Food for Food Truck Services, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point sixteen, approval of amendment number two with Filomeno Barrios Doing Business as Familia Barrios Catering for Food Truck Services, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point seventeen, approval of field contract for services with Stevens Construction Incorporated for EL one twenty-three over one twenty-five flooring replacement with strong workforce funds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point eighteen, approval of award bid, ABC twenty-two, twenty-three dash nine for Library and Mesquite Hall Elevator Upgrade to Santa Clarita Elevators with Scheduled Maintenance Funds. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Sixteen point nineteen, approval of award bid, ABC twenty-two, twenty-three dash ten for Library and Child Development Center Roof Repair to Best Contracting Services Incorporated with Scheduled Maintenance Funds, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, at this time, board, I'd like to ask for approval, we're going to block action items sixteen point twenty through sixteen point twenty-four, because they all pertain to measure AB funds. So knowing that, do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President, on the one that has to do with the beacons moving, are we taking all the old furniture and so forth out of the old building and putting it in the new building?
Old furniture is not going into the new buildings. There may be some, depending on the condition of it, that might be repurposed across the campus, but there might be some also that just get surplus.
Are they going to have like a yard sale or something?
We have, we can't do a yard sale, but we do have a surplus sale, and it's, the whole process is laid out in Title V, but we do make announcements when those things are available.
So those things that we don't take to the new building may be in the surplus.
Might be declared surplus.
Reversed a little bit, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion sixteen twenty point through sixteen point twenty-four passes. All right, aboard, there is one informational item for your review. It's the Certified Annual Financial and Budget Report, three eleven financial report for the fiscal year of twenty-one, twenty-two, budget report fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. For your review. All right. Reports and announcements, Mister Ben Rider.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We used to say good evening.
Yeah.
Sun's still out. Unrelated to my report, thank you for approving sixteen, eighteen, nineteen. As a librarian, I appreciate those repairs. I have two items that I'd like to bring today, and as a Senate President, I want to recognize what we talked about in sixteen point two and the approval of the ICER. The ICER tells our story. It tells us who we are, who we serve, what our purpose is, how we're doing, and which direction we want to move. I want to honor and acknowledge the tremendous, the tremendous work of those that have time they put in for the last few years. On page thirty-four and thirty-five, the ICER lists the teams, the contributors, and those that have engaged in this process, and I want to honor them. I also want to highlight in this process, and I'm going to use this word, the Herculean effort of Dr. Mita Goell and her staff in institutional effectiveness and research and planning. I have watched Dr. Goell put in significant time. I think there's been little sleep in the last few weeks and months. And I want to honor that dedication. And I want to invite the board to look at this. I want to invite you to review it, become familiar, become familiar with the structure of the ICER. As you do so, it's going to give you a snapshot of the following. Again, who we are, who we serve, the area. It's also going to help us understand the key areas, I'm going to read these four areas only as informational, not as counseling. The mission, the academic quality and institutional effectiveness and integrity of our programs, student learning programs and support services, resources to include the following, human resources, physical resources, technology and financial, and standard four, which is leadership and governance, which helps us understand decision-making processes, the role of the president, the role of the board. This document, as explained by President Zalat, is an exercise in reflection. It's an exercise in observation and analysis and evaluation by us. It is meant to help us to move forward and to grow. I invite the board, as well as all the campus community, to be familiar with those standards that pertain to them in particular, and of course, the campus community. My second item related to this is an invitation to the board and to all of the college faculty and staff leadership to participate in something we call collegiality in action. Effective participation fundamentals. This is going to be held on January twentieth, from twelve to three. This is an opportunity for us to sit with the ASCC president, Ginny May, and a member of the league. If I understand correctly, it will be the league president, I believe it's Larry. Lindsay. This is an opportunity for us as a campus to refresh what it means for decision-making, effective participation, shared governance. As we look forward, there's much that we have done well, and there's much that we can do better. Having them come is an opportunity for us to relearn, to revise, and to, again, to improve. And so again, that's on January twentieth, from twelve to three in the afternoon. Again, I express my appreciation to President Zalat for supporting and engaging in those conversations. Thank you, and of course, happy holidays to all of you.
Okay, Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, Dr. Bowen.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, President Zalat, Patty McClure. You're amazing. First, I want to congratulate Michael Adams, Barbara Gaines, and Steve Buffalo for winning reelection. I'd like to thank, I mean, this is the end of the semester, we're heading off into the holidays now, or the holiday break. And I'd like to publicly thank ABCFT leadership, Carla Corona, our adjunct VP, who's amazing, Dr. Cindy Hendricks, who's our lead negotiator and secretary. Carlos Penho has done an amazing job as a grievance officer, and he's stepping down on spring, because he's just, there's just a lot of good news going on in his life and other things he needs to focus on. Kent Moser, our treasurer, who is irreplaceable. Kathy Osborne, who's the every person, she does everything, and I appreciate her for taking my six AM phone calls. Tamira Palmetto de Spain, who took an early phone call also, she's on our negotiations team, and she's pivotal. Alberto Larry Naga, he's just, you know, we talk a lot, we joke a lot. He makes life easier, and then his ideas are exceptionally helpful. Dr. Scott Lee is our political director. We're grateful for his work and the expertise he brings from his past participation in ABCFT. And then Dr. Aurora Bird, who was on our grievance committee, she's stepping down for spring, because she too has just some good news going on in her life. So we wish Carlos and Aurora well, and we're looking forward to seeing who's going to step up and fulfill these responsibilities. I'm grateful for, the union is grateful for sixteen thirteen, so there's preparations being made to reopen the kitchen, we think that is great news, so thank you, everyone, for that. I'd also like to thank Michelle Hernandez and Jill Zimmerman, and then everyone else whose names I don't know for this spectacular event that was put on yesterday, so it was a gift extravaganza. Alberto Larry Naga was there, I was there, Kent Moser was there, Dr. Darcy Weewall were there, us four were in the back, so we governed the food. And so that was a lot of fun, we laughed a lot. I got to wrap some gifts, and you know, one of the things I'll never forget is, so there's a lot of cans, you know, soups and things, chili, but then there's the green beans, and for some reason, no one was taking those. So what we were trying to do was say, hey, you got to eat your vegetables, there's some green beans down there, and they looked down there and they shook their head, no. And then later, so we're there, this is a long event, so we're there for a couple of hours, literally hours. We had all these green beans still there. Students would come up, first of all, the turnout, I just, I've never seen anything like this. It will stay with me for a long time, it changed my life. I couldn't believe it, I took a lot of pictures, but students would come up, and I had students I hadn't seen, right? Okay, you're new, they would say, no, we don't want any green beans. They'd go get something else. But we had the employee holiday party. Michael Reeves was there, faculty, staff, students. So you know, despite some of the difficulties, there's, problems are hard to solve. But I am grateful for the last couple of weeks, was able to celebrate the President Zalat's birthday with her last Wednesday. That was also a life-changing event because of the diversity in gender. We had male, female leadership present. We had different ethnicities present, different sexual orientations present, and then we learned that we all like to have fun. Now, I left early, because apparently I don't like to have fun, but everyone else stayed and then cut a rug out on the dance floor and did line dancing, and I heard there's a video of that. So I'm trying to track that down so I can post it. It's not always been easy working with the office of legal counsel, but I want to say thank you for the work we were able to get done over the last couple of weeks. It was tough, but you were fair, and so I want to state that for the record. So I just want to wish everyone So I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, and I'm looking forward to coming back in spring, resolving all the issues we have, but serving our students first and foremost. Thank you.
Okay, Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Pamela Ford.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Pamela Ford, classified union president. And I have to say that one word that defines this year is bittersweet. As the bitter represents that we have lost some very dear colleagues, friends, and loved ones. We've also said goodbye to those retiring and those moving on to new adventures. We started the year facing uphill battles and challenges. Now, closing out the year came the sweep. As we welcomed our new president, Dr. Jennifer Zalat, with her bold agenda, be kind, serve students. She's one with an open door policy, inclusion, and one who welcomes communication all times of day and night, and a vision to sharing ideas and a goal to move us forward, building our campus community back better and increasing our student enrollment. We also have welcomed new employees to our campus and are looking forward to a new year with vice presidents of Academic Affairs, Human Resources, and Student Services to assist with carrying out the president's agenda. And understandably, there will be changes. But my hope is that with this administration, the changes will be purposeful and mindful with an interest to the benefit of all and not just a few. Both classified and faculty unions have embraced a new state representative, Arian Johnson, who champions and fosters building relationships and has been intent on building bridges that have eroded over the years. And by busting silos and encouraging open communication dialogue, and I have to say, I have seen the effects of his hard work. And that's why we were all out there dancing for Jennifer's birthday. And I can't express my appreciation enough for the building of relationships and unity between the faculty unions and the classified union as a result of the hard work of the faculty union president, outgoing Aurora Byrd, and now Jason Bowen. Classified through it all have remained steadfast in serving students. And to them, I send a robust thank you. We are all looking forward to the conclusion of negotiations and the settling of issues, knowing that those resolutions will ease the burdens on our pocketbooks and move us forward in a positive direction with a positive outlook. I must admit, classified have not been, have been extremely frustrated with the slowness of the process, believing and feeling that the, that progress is not being made, that their needs are being ignored. And I have faced a lot of harsh criticism from my constituent group over the past few months in trying to embrace this new way of doing things. But I'm willing to bear the brunt of their angst because I feel certain that if they hang on just a little bit longer, they will see the benefits of working stronger and better together as progress is forthcoming. See, I'm almost done, Bridget. I would like to thank a few people, myself, I'd like to thank Suzanne Olson, our first vice president, and she's a negotiation team member, and my confidant, and she just goes through everything with me. Desiree Lee, our second vice president, who is definitely instrumental in getting things done for us. Janelle Paul, our treasurer, who keeps our books and our records, and she's a negotiation team member. Paul Smith Hurst, he's a negotiation team member. Bridget Cook, the district's chief negotiator, and although we may not always agree, we are learning to work together to have fun and to face our challenges together. And Megan, who is the paralegal and works with us in negotiations, and most of all, our strident chief negotiator, Arian Johnson. And to you, board members and colleagues around this room, I wish you all the best during this holiday season, and I look forward to a positive new year. Thank you.
Okay. Confidential Management Supervisory Administrative Employees, Ms. Michelle Hernandez.
Good morning. I would like to congratulate our board members on being reelected. Congratulations and congratulations to all of you who have taken on new roles on the board. We do appreciate your leadership on our campus. I'd also like to wish everyone a happy holiday and to thank our, our small but mighty board. Um, myself, I am, I am joined by Greg Borman, who is the admin representative, Michelle Williams, who is our secretary, and Jim Firth, who is our treasurer, and we are currently in the middle of our elections for our representatives for confidential management and supervisors. In, in light of the gifted extravaganza and, and not trying to take any of the thunder from our president, who really did come up with the, the concept for our gifted extravaganza, but we had about a hundred and twenty students who came through, representing about two hundred and sixty children and family members that they were able to free shop. Um, and they were able to do that by the kindness, the grace, and the contributions of the entire campus. So all of the clothing, the food, the toys, and even some household items were all provided by Antelope Valley College faculty and staff. And we were able to service those students and still provide anything left over will go to our food pantry, our dress for success program, and our family resource center. Um, so many, many, many thanks to our campus community for those donations. We couldn't have done it without them. And then we had over thirty volunteers who came out and helped set up our mini Walmart. We were really a, a little department store yesterday, and they, they greeted our students. Our students were so appreciative to have the interaction, to have that service provided to them, and they walked out. We had gift wrapping. Um, so they walked out with not only gifts, but also they were wrapped and bundled up, and so um, it really did not only warm our hearts and life changing to those who participated in it, but it really did have an incredible, an incredible effect on our students. And so we're very, very honored and privileged to be a part of that, that planning committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Associated Student Organization, Diana Perisoli.
Good morning, everyone. Um, so for this week, or the past couple of weeks, A S O, we did this U G O P this week where we provided students on finals week with some snacks, some coffee, some hot cocoa, some scantrons and green books for them in order for them to be prepared and have energy for finals. Um, we also provided a hundred bags yesterday during the food drive for a hundred students. And then we're also going to be providing another a hundred bags next week on Thursday for another hundred students. We also donated some toys for the gift extravaganza. And we have added a new senator for the arts and humanities, which is Mr. or see beneath this, and added a new treasurer, which is Gem de Jesus. Um, also yesterday, I do want to say thank you to everybody that was involved in the gifted extravaganza. I was also part of that. I went there to get my gifts from my kids, and I thought it was so amazing. Being a student myself, I was really appreciated of everybody's hard work and everything that they put in it. I was talking to the other students, and they were so excited because they had never seen anything like this. So I do want to say thank you to everybody and happy holidays.
Thank you. Antelope Valley College Federation, Ms. Diane Knippel.
Good morning, everyone. Congratulations on your reelection and your new positions. And Michael, you're always with us. I love it. Thank you for wanting to continue to support. You've been a long term supporter of the foundation, not only from a verbal perspective, but your own personal donations. So I really appreciate your support, and I look forward to the, for the future. It truly is a season of giving, so we just concluded our Giving Tuesday campaign through the whole month of November. Proud to say that we have raised twenty three thousand, three hundred and sixty seven dollars for the Hearts and Hands pantry. So that just goes into the endowment, helps support the students for the future, and I just want to thank you. Many of our community, as well as our A B C community contributed this year. We received some new donors and some new payroll deductions to help. So thanks again for all your support. Happy holidays. See you soon. Thanks.
Okay. President Zalat.
Board members, good morning. We don't get to say good morning very often, so once a year, good morning. I want all of us to take in this moment. This is a historic moment because this is the last time we will be meeting in this boardroom. Starting in January, our next board meeting will be at the Performing Arts Center. And so as this building comes down, we close a chapter in A B C history and we retire this boardroom. So I'm glad it's been such a meeting full of appointments and good news and giving. I think we're closing out the boardroom in a wonderful way. So today I have the privilege of combining my weekly report to the board with the December president's report. We've officially completed Fall twenty two semester, and students, faculty, staff, and administration are turning their sights to a much earned break. Amongst the accomplishments in this last month, and I say amongst, because if I started listing them all, we'd, Patty'd be buying us lunch. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our women's soccer team. I am so proud of the soccer team. When I first met them at their orientation, I went around and was meeting our student athletes. We engaged in a conversation about winning and losing, and I was told very firmly by the now defensive player of the year, we don't lose. I loved the spirit then, and I love it now. Congratulations to the team and the coach for winning the C C C A A Western State South Conference Championship. And we can clap for that. That's pretty awesome. On our team, twelve players earned honors. The defensive player of the year was Cassie James. Our first team was Paula Figueroa, Kelsey Brewster, Isabel Serta, Brenda Mario, and Kalen Gonzalez. On second team was Kimberly Duarte, Katie Kreese, Megan Spelsvold, and Emily Serrano. Honorable mention was Lourdes Teodores and Brianna Ortega. And coach of the year, coach of the year was Charles Gordon, all from A B C. Isn't that awesome? It's wonderful. Congratulations team, and we'll have them back so that you can all meet them, and we can present them with some honors. Second, A B C at the B twenty one launch. I was honored to be amongst a group of invitees to attend the unveiling of the B twenty one Raider, named after Doolittle's Raiders from World War Two, and I had the privilege of sitting two people down from his grandson. It was amazing. This aircraft is incredibly impressive. Throughout the day, I met many A B C graduates on the assembly line and in different roles at Northrop Grumman, and I was very encouraged as I spoke with executives there. Antelope Valley College is elemental to the support of their workforce, and we are all committed to deepening this collaboration. It was incredibly gratifying that on such a huge national stage, our programs and certificates are receiving this recognition. Thank you to the dean, faculty, and staff in that area who are committed to excellence. We are indeed serving not only our community, we're serving our nation. Talking about success and completion, so many employees across the campus invested greatly in the success of our students. And as the semester came to a close, cram was hosted in the learning center. You heard Diana talk about what A S O is doing. Student Services hosted things. I won't go into detail because Michelle spoke about it so much more eloquently. We're doing so many things to ensure that our students are positioned for success, and I am grateful to this campus because they have fully embraced our mantra of serving students and being kind. Accreditation and achieving the dream. These are all applications that are underway to take the college to the next level. Many thanks to Dr. Mita Goel for working on multiple initiatives, and Dr. Marina Kay Adabio for co-chairing the accreditation initiative. And thanks to all across the campus who ushered this process through. I look forward to the constructive feedback we receive so that we can better ourselves in the institution. The Achieving the Dream application was due about the same time they were winding up the accreditation process. And so there was a lot of, of double dipping going on in time, and I'm incredibly grateful. If we are awarded participation in Achieving the Dream, it's a three year process where we will be working on a plan to really revolutionize how we carry out things on this campus. Um, and being involved in that group, it's a national organization, one that McKinsey Phillips donated quite a substantial amount of money to. And so that opens up the doors for other possibilities for the college. So I'm very excited about that, and I'm grateful to the folks who've been working so hard. Opening day this semester, I opened telling you about my why. And you heard the story of my mother's family and how in her eighty seventh year, she went from riding on her mother's cotton sack to riding in the president's cart with her daughter. Her legacy continues, her inspiration continues, and I'm grateful for how she taught me the strength and courage to be humble, lead with purpose, and always, always serve. In a Christmas carol, Charles Dickens wrote, "Life is made up of meetings and partings, and that is the way of it." And Tiny Tim, bless his little heart, ended it all. How I would like to end this for all of you. God bless us, everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Zalat. Board member comments, Mister Buffalo.
Gosh, it's kind of nice staying down here.
Okay.
Um, Jason, my goodness, you need to get southern green beans from Tennessee. There won't be anything left. Good Lord, I mean, come on, let's get with it. Okay. And don't ask me to make them for you because I could screw them up. Okay? I think it was great, the women's soccer team winning. I remember when we started the program, and it was a great addition, and the current coach that we have has done a great job with both the women and the men. And congratulations to them. That was a terrific, a terrific moment. Yeah, it is the last meeting in this room, and that's really interesting because when I was a student here in nineteen sixty seven, I came in for a board meeting there for something or other. And I remember Ross Amsmoker was on that board, great board member. And so it has a lot of history here. It's amazing. So it, it will seem weird not being in here, but we'll have something great in the future, so I'm excited about that. So Merry Christmas to all of you and have a happy new year. And by gosh, since they don't have high school uh, driving anymore, schools, be careful on the roads.
Thank you, Mister Reeves.
First of all, on behalf of the board, I want to extend the condolences to our president, Zalat. And I bet you, Jennifer, she never imagined that her little girl would be a college president. So all of you, I hope you have a great Christmas and New Year, so we will see you next year in the auditorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
I was privileged to represent the board of trustees at the December first R N pinning. It's one of my favorite events during the course of the year is to attend the R N pinning. We have twenty nine new student, or new registered nurses out in the community. And one of the things I always tell them is remember this face, because if you see me, you want to treat me gently and remember that I helped you during the graduation. And not, not to joke too much about it, but you know, earlier this year I had kidney stones. And one of the things I always do when I'm in a medical office is I say to the nurse, where'd you go to nursing school? And if they say Antelope Valley College, I go, I was at your graduation. And that always guarantees gentle treatment. So, so it's one of those things that I always remember, you know, where did you graduate? And if it's A B C, great. If it's College of the Canyons, I just, eh. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Michelle. Yes, first of all, I would like to share with Mister Reeves and our condolences to our president. We are so sorry for your loss, and if we can be of service in any way, please let any of us know. Um, I just wanted to wish you all happy holidays and to let you know that my schedule for the new year is a beast. I just wanted to wish you all happy holidays and to let you know that my schedule for the new year is a beast. I will be coming to you from Austin, Texas via Zoom for the next board meeting. Already know that, so I just wanted to give you a heads up about it. So I look forward to seeing you all in the new year. Thank you. First thing I want to say is I had avid students attend the, attend Antelope Valley Community College. I believe it was week before last. And these avid students advancement via individual determination are those students who are sort of referred to as those, they may not be the most high achieving students on campus, but they're those that are working really hard to put themselves in preparation to attend college. And for many of them, the feedback these students returned to Roseman High School with was absolutely amazing about Antelope Valley Community College. Some of them said, I had no idea. I guess they were, they took a tour and they had no idea of all the programs and all the new construction. And so they are now very, very excited to attend Antelope Valley College and their future. So I've always been a firm believer that the more we can get even elementary students on this campus, the brighter our future will, will be as an academic institution. So thank you, everyone who, I'm not sure who all was involved in that, in that day, but they certainly came back foaming at the mouth with everything they saw and learned about ABC. I also want to take this moment to say, thank you, thank you, thank you to Mr. Steve Buffalo. You did an outstanding job this past year, Steve, and you were a little anxious to get down there, I noticed, but hopefully I'll just be able to kind of breathe in and breathe out. But thank you for your service for how many years now, Steve? Yeah, it's a long, long time. And so you know, that's, that's absolutely awesome. I, I want to say thank you to all of my colleagues on the board for entrusting in me the and giving me the opportunity to serve as your president this next year. I hope I won't disappoint you too much. But I'm sure Michelle will keep me in line if I get out of line. So thank you for that vote of confidence. And I also want to say to Dr. Bowen, Dr. Bowen, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure, this is an FYI for you. Green beans are my absolute favorite. And if you mix them with a little corn like we did in the South, wow, that would, I would have, I would have been there if you'd have just let me know. So just keep that, keep that in mind. And for Pamela, I see Pamela and Bridget probably becoming BFFs in the next year. That is a goal of mine, a personal goal of mine. So who knows if that could happen, but I'm going to stay on that every month. So don't be surprised. So I too want to say, you know, give my condolences to Dr. Zalat. I remember when she talked so graciously at the opening about her mother and I sort of walked away with thinking what a journey this young lady has made throughout her life. And so we are here for you. We are here for you. So I want to wish everyone a happy holiday. I don't know how many grandkids you have. I have 15. So, and I can honestly say with one I'm sitting in the audience, I really don't have anything for him yet. Don't panic. I'm sure I'll get there. Couple of weeks left before the big day. So I wish everyone a wonderful holiday and you know, just relax and be safe because there still are some little elements of COVID out there. We know that. And just try to relax and enjoy your family. So with that, we will adjourn at 10:39.